Two were in the same case.
Oh, yeah.
The second. Hearing part A, hearing part B.
Why are there two cases for the same thing?
They do. So we did.
There's two separate properties, Marcia. That's why there's two separate cases.
Okay, thanks. Sharon, you know when we're doing folders or are they kidding me?
Are they what?
Holders for us? You can never tell.
No.
You're not, okay. Sometimes you joke with them.
Oh, I'm at this table. Levity, yes, jokes. You approving anything else? No, yeah, minutes for approval. Cases. This is in the one. Yeah. Still keep these out of your reach. Do you have a decision?
There's a couple of these. Tell us two.
We'll work on it next week. Till next week. If you're not here, will she? This is his case.
Same thing. This is a copy.
I don't know. Doing the stuff. All the time. One, two. So this is public here. Yeah. One, two, three percent. Great. Okay, thank you, sir.
I put a sticky note on it.
What?
I put a sticky note on each one of them.
It says public hearings, right? Decision case, right? I don't think we're gonna do that tonight because Jude's not here.
Oh, okay.
That's her case?
Yeah. And she said that people said they want him break.
Are we still waiting for Joe?
No, I was just waiting for seven o'clock, sure.
Okay.
She's not coming then?
She's not coming?
Didn't keep track.
Martin's in New York.
We're doing good. We got three. That's it. I was just waiting for the. Oh, yeah. Here comes five, four. I'd like to call the Woodstock zoning Board of Appeals meeting for April 20th, 2023. To order, do you have a second?
Second.
Favor. We have a quorum. Gordon Webb. Michael Castillo.
Marcia's willing.
Are there any changes or additions to the meeting agenda for tonight? I have to know. So I would like to submit the minutes from March 23rd, 2023 for approval. Do I have a second? On favor. Okay. Nice habit. Moving on, we have three public hearings. So ZBA case number 23 dash 06. Application Chris Hendry for property located 40 Vinci诺 Pacino Road. Woodstock, New York, 12498. A 3.19 acre parcel located within our five zoning district preparing to zone in all the town. Let's start. Article four area bulk regulations modification required to our section 260 dash 26B 3A. As modified by section 260 dash 7. Corner lots for a 30 foot infringement. It's way minimum required 60 foot front mark setback. In order to construct a 24 foot by 24 foot two story garage. You have a. Okay, would you like to come up to the table? Good for the microphones. Just hear you better.
Is my wife on?
Yes, yes, anybody want?
And my son has to talk about it.
All right. So yeah, we just, you know, give us your presentation of what you're doing and, you know, a little narrative of it. And whatever you want to say.
Well, we don't have any visuals to go with it, but.
Well, we do have, I mean. Yeah.
Oh, great.
And we have some buildings. Here we go.
Gordon, I just want to state that Jude Salatos now at the meeting.
Hello Jude, say hi.
Hi Jude.
Yeah. Go ahead. Maybe you can describe the project in relations to the property in the house and why you need a variance as far as you know.
Um. It's, it starts with the fact that we have a small house. We've looked into ways to, you know, extend it and do that. We can't afford anything like that. We have a whole bunch of stuff in our yard, like my tractor. And, you know, all of our tools and all that stuff. We would like to combine both the garage, which we need because what we'd like for all the outside stuff, including the cars in the winter. Because you get rodent in them. And porcupines and fun stuff like that. I like to work on the cars too. So I need that, that floor of the garage. So. So we need, we wanted the outbuilding to, to serve the purpose of all that. As far as the location goes, there's only the natural location for it to go, which is where, where it is. We're on a corner, which, which gives us the problem of, you know, setbacks on all sides kind of thing. But, you know, the way the driveway comes in and the way the building would sit over there is simply naturally the place that it belongs. We couldn't move it any further into the property. There's a septic, it's a leach field area. It's sort of built up in the middle of the property. There's a stream on the other side of the property. So we can't move it too far close to that anyway.
So in between where the garage is located here, but will you drive?
Yeah, so we did want to bring pictures. The back of the house.
So the stream feels back here?
Yep. It's a little more to the, to the, to your right. It's not on center on the house. It's a little more to the right, but there's a big hill there. You could, we could honestly, yeah, we could tuck it three more feet in, five more feet in.
Then you'd be up against the hill.
Uh, yeah, close enough. And then, you know, and we do have a beautiful view that goes down and we don't want to, we don't want to ruin the view. We have a mountain view. It's anything. The arts, currently we have a very small basement in our very small house. That is filled with bikes and Christmas ornaments and all my tools. And to be able to put those into the garage also opens up the basement as a new room for us. So that's a big reason.
So the space upstairs is you, you're looking to do that as storage?
The, yeah, storage or, yeah, I mean.
Not storage or storage. Yes, we'd like to relocate what's currently in our basement.
Waiting chance, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I just have one question. So it's two stories. Would it be blocking anybody else's view on Mount Taba?
No.
No, okay.
I don't know if you really qualify those two stories, but sort of, I guess a model. Right with a.
I mean, yeah, I don't know. Is it not two stories?
No, it's two stories in the drawing. And I just didn't know if there was a house right there that was.
There's one, there's one set fact that they don't have a view over.
Well, we probably, we usually like to put our eyes on it. I haven't signed this. Does anybody would like to take this case on?
Okay, sure.
All right. So usually we just do a site visit. That way you can see. You'll see.
It would be much easier to show you than try and. So I'll give you a call and.
Okay.
Whatever's convenient for you.
Okay.
We both work from home. Happen easily.
Cool. And I'm sorry, your name again?
Marcia's willing.
Marcia.
Okay.
Is that it?
Any other questions? No, 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 I don't.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, that's it. Because Marshall gets out of view and then. You know, usually, usually we have 62 days where we're supposed to be able to render a decision. We try to do it sooner. We meet every, you know, the second and fourth week of the month. And we're meeting, this is special meeting. So I know we'll have it, we probably won't get ready for next meeting so probably at the earliest meeting after that, so.
Did you have plans when you wanted to start building it or? No, I mean, I would like to start before, you know, the ground freezes this year, but.
I don't know. I don't know if it'll happen this year because of their backlog. I don't know.
Oh, okay. But your variance is only good for a certain amount of time.
A year, a year. So, yeah. That should be okay. Yes.
Jude?
I have to double check with.
Excuse me.
With Brad Barnes.
Excuse me.
Jude has a question.
Dude, sorry.
Don't you have to read the neighbors?
Can you turn it up, Jude? Possibly?
You have to, don't you have to read the neighbors? Michelle?
Yes, the contiguous neighbors. Yeah, I wasn't closing it down, but.
Um, yeah, I would tell them, you know, let them know that your variance is only good for a year or so.
Yeah, that's, you know, finally they, they want to, just locking it in like, I can't lock in with you till I know that I could do it. And I'm stuck in this fun little place.
Okay, so Michelle, can you read the contiguous neighbors for us, please?
Status. Law. James Cavani, 215 Bay Street, Suite 300 Barica, Hillbacks 222 Mount Trumper, New York. Goel Bridges, 8 Spruce Street, 47B New York. City of New York, DEP, 71 Smith Avenue, Bureau of Water Supply. There was no communication or emails regarding this.
Okay, well, there's a, oh, no, just 10 pans of. But I don't think there's anybody, is anybody who's to speak on this case? No. So I guess with that, any other questions before I close public hearing?
No.
Okay, so with that, I would like to close the public hearing for case 23. Oh, six.
Oh, six.
Second. Do I have a second? All favor? All right, okay, you guys have it. And with that, I would like to recess case number 2306. Second.
Second.
Favor. Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
I'll reach out to you in the next few days and figure out.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Good night. Thank you.
Yes, anybody else come.
Oh, yeah. Hey, moving on, I'd like to, ZBA case number 2307. Application of Benjamin Bakish. Is it Bakish?
Gach.
Bakash. Benjamin Bakash and Laura De Soul as represented by Jess Walker, Walker Architecture, 59 Millville Road. Woodstock, New York, 12498 for property located 727-7. Xena Road, Woodstock, New York, 12498, a 20.71 acre parcel located within R3 Zone District. Where a variance from zoning law of the town was.
Gordon? We can't hear you anymore. Gordon? Gordon, we can't hear you anymore.
Yeah, I can hear you, Jude.
I can't hear them. Can you?
No.
Your default microphone has changed.
There you are. There you are.
Okay, your default microphone has changed. Nothing we did, but it changed. So I guess.
Okay.
Gordon?
Yes.
Did you read both of these cases at the same time? Because they're essentially two contiguous properties with the same owner.
All thing together, right? Yes, okay. You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, where was I? Section 360 dash 32A to allow the construction of an eight foot high deer fence in the front yard. Where only a four foot fence is allowed in section 360 dash 32D 3A to construct an eight foot high deer fence. 10 feet from property line where the required distance is 20 feet. That will enclose a residence or prevent the intrusion of deer and have vegetable garden enclosure. Also, in this presentation, we have ZBA case number 23 dash 08. Application of Benjamin Bakash and Laura De Soul as represented by Jess Walker, Walker Architecture, 59 Millville Road, Woodstock, New York, 12498. At property located 27, 729 Xena Road, Woodstock, New York, 12498. A 20.71 acre parcel located within an R3 zoning district for variance. From the zoning law of town, Woodstock, New York, 12498. Section 360 dash 32D 3A, merely allowing for that difference in front yard, only four foot that slot. To be located 10 feet from property line with required distances 20 feet.
Hi. Jess Walker Architects, we are doing extensive renovations to a 100 year old duck building house on 727 Xena Road, which is about a mile and a half down Xena. A big hedge in front. I'm sure you'll know it. Chad D's lived there for decades. Bought by. Renovation, we're renovating the house and all of the outbuildings, it's extensive. And along with that, we'll be putting in an extensive landscaping. And this is Jean Mark. He's here to tell you about the fence we are applying for to protect this landscape.
Right. So Ben and Laura hired my firm to produce a extensive master plan for the property. That includes gardens and many other features. And part of my proposal here is with, hopefully with your approval, is to enclose two thirds of the property on the west side of Xena Road to not only protect the gardens that they're installing, but also to help restore the woodlands that are significant in that parcel that are completely deer browsed at the moment. There's no herbaceous understory left. The deer fence that I've come up with over many years of my practice is almost invisible. It's a very light touch. You can't even really see the structure. The posts are 12 to 16 feet apart, depending on the run. And there's a metal mesh, black powder coated metal mesh that kind of keeps the deer out, but it's completely invisible. So from the road, you would see a couple of posts here and there and we would plant around them. So the post would kind of disappear. And that would allow us to protect the gardens. And last slide that you have there shows kind of the impacts. If you all have the last slide, kind of explains a little bit about the impact to the quality of the woodlands with the deer browsing. And so this deer fence allows smaller critters like salamanders, turtles and foxes can still cross through because we have lead holes for them. The only animals that are excluded are the deer. And within a year or two, all that woodland should start regrowing, regenerating its entire herbaceous ground layer. First wildflowers in the forest. So that's part of my proposal to the clients. And so we kind of taking. Try to illustrate the layers on the third page of between the right of ray, the planting buffer, where the deer fence would, would sit in that composition on the left hand side. And it would be in on page, yeah, the third page that has the sections and elevations that would kind of explain. There's a plan view on the bottom and a section on top that kind of illustrates kind of the layering effect. So from Xena Road, if you're driving by, you would never see this fence. It would be completely, first of all, in and of itself, it's kind of invisible. But then with the plantings, it would be really layered into the landscape.
How many feet are you talking about with this fence?
The linear, the linear. Here it's worth, it's 5,000 linear feet. It's basically a mile of linear foot mile of deer fencing. It's 30, so they have 30, they own 32 acres and we're proposing to fence in 21 of those. Roughly 21 of those acres pulling back from all of the property lines and taking care of the southwestern section near DeWitt Lane that we would pull back even further than the, than the setback so that the deer fence would be invisible to those neighbors on the other side of the grid.
Most of that linear footage is as a bright.
Is what?
As a bright. The only part we're asking for variance on is the front yard along the road.
The problem with that big of a fence, you're diverting all the wildlife to the neighbor's properties.
The deer.
Well, deer fences are allowed, but it's where it's allowed. Before we get to, can you help me why there's two?
Yes, there, there's actually three locks. They only cross the street, which makes it a unique site because no neighbor is facing their front, their front yard.
So there's two because one is.
There's two, and one is completely as a bright. So the only two lots are the lots on Xena Road. But this is the variances. The only variance we're asking for is right along Xena Road.
Right. You're asking for.
Eight foot instead of a four foot fence. 10 feet back instead of.
Four foot instead of that. Yeah, yeah, okay. Hold on Jude, I'll get you.
So you're, as a bright, you're allowed to fence in your property.
Jude? Jude?
I'm trying. You're waiting for people to stop talking.
Calling on Jude.
Thank you. My understanding is you're asking for an eight foot fence where you are allowed a six foot fence in the rear of the property, but you're asking for eight. So the only, it's not the only variance you're asking for is in the front.
If it's 20 foot setback, it can be an eight foot fence. Or to protect.
They're, they're. Eight foot deer fences are allowed. But what composes a deer fence? It's not.
To protect.
No, no.
No.
Composition of a deer fence. The definition of a deer fence is not just any eight foot fence.
Well, this is an agricultural grade design. This is agricultural, like if you had a farm, you would enclose your crops with this type of fencing.
I understand.
But the deer fence, the way it's written in the code, isn't that a stream of wire?
Yes.
Not a fence, fence.
As far as I can see, it's, it's not, it's one of those things. It's not really well defined, I have to admit. At least not in my thinking, but yeah, Jude?
My understanding is the way that Butch wrote up this variance was that for part of it was the eight foot fence surrounding the property. Part of it was for the front and part of it was for the rest of the fence being eight feet. That's my understanding of the way that Butch wrote up the variance request. Maybe I'm wrong.
So you're, where, where he has the wording would enclose a residence?
I don't know if you can make that. Residents would require varies. So, yes, okay. So legally enclosing the residents is.
So, so then.
With any fence.
Okay, so then for 2307, the variances for enclosing the property and 230 eight foot fence in the front yard of only a four foot fence.
Yes.
Right, is that, that's, that's why there's two.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're.
Variants applications.
Yes.
Where is the residence?
Right in the center of the front sheet. This is to the left of the word Xena Road.
And there's some, yeah, some other accessory buildings.
So I guess we need to look into the code that, what, how it's written. How is it defining a deer fence?
This deer fence could be modified to yours. If there were some kind of code spec that we could follow, we could, like, the mesh part could be lower and then you could have a, sometimes you have a series of of just wires run along the posts on the top. So the mesh could be six foot and the rest of the two feet could have wires. Or whatever.
Black metal poles or?
No, they're bark covered cedar posts. They completely disappear. They look like trees.
So the residence is pretty close to Xena Road too. So if it were brought back to the sides of the properties, then perhaps. Couple of reasons we have here, you know, what's, what's. Because obviously it's not capable.
And also.
Doesn't match that's full of.
Okay, when he's looking at that, I wasn't aware of that.
And once you grant a variance on a house that's right on Xena Road, say you're allowing a 10 foot fence, you're setting a precedent for everybody else to come in with a 10 foot fence, which may, eight foot, which may not take the same care and, you know, consideration that you're taking.
But they would require a variance and you could make sure that they took that care. And also we have the land across the street. So this is a unique site. And uniqueness is important in a. Had a neighbor right across the street, that neighbor could come oppose it, but we don't. Had a neighbor right across the street, that neighbor could come oppose it, but we don't.
Yeah, well, like Mark said, the president is something that's we'll get, we get a lot of, we're getting a lot of.
Right.
I'm sure.
Everyone wants to make a board, everyone wants to make a board.
Well, everybody wants to hear about from our gardeners.
Well, you can close the garden, but closing entire properties.
Well, this is a third of their paperage, but, and we pulled back from the property lines and cut out some parts that they originally wanted to have in the deer fence. To minimize the footprint.
If they ran the fence behind the house instead of in front of the house, would that, could that be an alternative that would then not require to care?
Well, we're also doing it across the road.
No, they're only blocking. The problem is that the main visible and usable landscape for the house, the part that it's going to have the most work done in terms of where including cottage gardens, vegetable gardens.
Could be near the house.
It's, it's going to be in between Xena Road and the house. And they're really interested in, you know, creating a layered effect with lots of trees and shrubs to, you know, to buffer the, the view of Xena Road so that they feel a little more private in a kind of sensitive way, so the deer fence would really help us achieve that planting effect.
There are deer resistant shrubberies and things you can plant if it was just the front of the house.
I don't think so, not many, not many.
They get hungry, they, they, they ate my road eventually. Yeah, so they did not eat, but that's, that's a whole other thing.
We're also proposing a stone wall along, along the road.
Which will, which will, you know, give one more layer in front of the fence.
From current visibility.
Which again makes this more unique.
It is unique and it's both planned out.
Where on this map is this?
Will be driveway things out, where they, some driveway is, we're hoping to actually extend the driveway over here in the future, which would have the same entrance, we'd just be moving the entrance. He has right, so it's not going to worry.
This is, this design is not finalized, this was a kind of a hypothetical layout to try to illustrate how the composition would work between the fence and the wall and the plantings and to just kind of illustrate that it's going to be very sensitively and lined. And there would be many, many plants layered on both sides of the fence.
My concern is, this is beautiful and I wish everybody who came to us would have such a well thought out and beautiful plan, but allowing this large fence, when it's four foot fence, in, you know, it's just going to set a precedent for other people to say, well, you did this at this house, you allowed it.
That's, that's the first problem we're, we're doing now.
And we can't really define, say, well, if you do this type of fence, we'll give you the variance, does it work that?
Why not?
Because it's.
Well, we're not planning.
Well, in my, I mean, we can retreat and fence in sections of the garden, but then there's going to be little mini fences like around the benches of garden or around the cottage garden or around the pool or various features where there's planting, so that visually is going to be very difficult and awkward and also for pedestrian circulation on the site. The idea is to really elevate the ecology and the aesthetics of the site by getting rid of the deer in the most discreet tasteful way possible. Which I think sets a new precedent of, a good precedent.
That's really well planned, well planned, very, very you know, it seems to have some good things going forward, we have a series of problems, we hit the kind of mall crowd here.
So the area outlined in the area.
Kind of orange, orange shaded. Where the fence would, yeah, again, this is kind of still, it's not a hundred percent accurate because it has, you know, there were trees that might be in the way and it might vary slightly.
But I guess it generalization.
Yes.
So the cattle garden will keep the deer from coming down.
Drive right, yes, you know, we've installed several of those and then there would be a pedestrian gate on the side of the cattle garden that would allow people to.
Have these posts been installed already?
No, this is other projects that I've done, you can see on the bottom left, that's as, that, that situation is if we hadn't put plants, if we added plants to that, you wouldn't even see it at all. It doesn't even, it doesn't even register as a fence in the same definition as the four foot fence that I think you guys are defining in your, in your zoning rules. This kind of really is very transparent, so it does not read as a, as a.
We lost you again.
Excuse me?
We just lost you for a minute again, I don't know what's going on.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
We're not doing anything.
Yes, you are, I see.
Yeah, but I do that now, they're kind of sparking, something's going on with the system. You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just yell out if you can hear.
Okay, you can hear us, so that's.
And that image on the last slide is, I think, very powerful on the upper left hand corner, it shows the difference between the deer exclusion ground layer of a forest and, you know, what would happen outside it, so rejuvenating the woodland is something, I mean, these clients are extremely kind and sensitive people, they certainly don't want to upset anybody and do anything that's going to, you know, they think they're doing the right thing.
They also want to be here.
How long is this stone wall? This isn't, you know, it's a stone wall.
It will be the length of Xena Road, right?
Yep. I don't have a linear, I do not have the linear feet on that, but I do have a scale bar here.
And that's put on both sides of the road?
Yes, we're proposing it on both sides of the road, very similar to existing stone walls that are on, in many sections of.
Yeah, I'm just curious that that really.
Some of these actually already have stone walls, some of this section already has a stone wall, we'd be essentially restoring this stone wall that was already there. So it would look totally like a vernacular, local historic stone wall.
Yeah, I just, eight, when we hear eight foot fence front yard, I mean, we, everybody here just freezes up, so that's just, you know, and the deer fence is not well defined, something we're really going to have to have discussion with Butch and go through the interpretation of what's exactly that encompassed.
But you didn't mention that this fence wasn't acceptable. As you can see, this is probably the best choice for this application because it's almost as invisible as you can get.
But it's still a variance, you're asking for a six foot variance where four feet only is allowed, so that's why it's, you know.
Like the four foot variance.
Right.
We're allowing, we're proposing eight feet.
Right.
You got that.
But a four foot, opaque, opaque fence would be, would be allowed, we're asking for an eight foot.
Would a six foot fence hold in deer?
No, unfortunately not, but a six foot mesh fence with wires strung across for the remainder of the two would probably, and it's not.
Probably be more visible than just this mesh.
Yeah, I think it would probably visually, it might.
We're striving for invisibility here.
Right, but if it were somehow, if we needed to modify the design, we could.
You see, a lot of these seem to already, this deer fence used to be, I mean, I had a couple of schools of myself that had engaged. Yeah, and electrify it.
We're not electrifying.
I'm just saying that they used it to that and that's sort of what it was, it was a, so they kind of just modified what people use for horses and cattle.
Yeah.
Applied it to deer and nothing has changed since. Since then, of course, we've had, you know, powder black fencing, that didn't exist ten, twenty years ago.
So I would like to make a big difference. Possible we'll be asking for variance on the mesh.
Yeah, because, you know, we're just dealing with some really, it's aged out, we haven't updated some of these things, it's not that well written. Still asking for, it's not allowed in the front yard, so there still is that. That's the main.
That, I think, spirit of that code was written so that would stop the area remained open and not like, you know, fenced in.
I think people sit in front yards and, you know, you don't want livestock in front yards, most people like put that up to keep livestock in rather than out, so.
Again, the spirit was probably trying to stop opaque fences that were really boxing and.
Which are, which there are several.
But that's my concern, you, you can't dictate next person to say, oh, you, you can't put up a wooden fence.
Because you can just.
Now the code is written.
If, if, no, there are certain, if you put an allowance for a specific thing, then you've only allowed one specific thing.
Right.
So, you know.
Would be setting a pretty high and beautiful bar for anyone else applying for a variance for a deer fence or for any other fence. Which is what we were hoping to convey today, we know we're asking for a lot, so clearly.
Just wait till I ask my lawyer to eat that.
Rod? Yeah, of course.
I know what he said the last time about a fence variance.
Right. Again, we're asking you really take a look at the fence that we're proposing.
So we are.
It's beautiful.
Yeah, I don't think anybody here is, I think this is really. Thought out, layering, yeah.
Our clients also wanted to be here tonight, but they couldn't, just change.
All right, well, does anybody want this one? Jude, she jumped right up, look at that, you got two.
I just finished one, so yes.
Okay. So.
Jude, you should look, are you leaving?
Yes, these are for you and we can also send to a digital file that you could.
Jude, you should get a copy of this.
I've seen, I've seen whatever the application has, but I can pick it up from Michelle.
Yeah.
I would like to see it.
Yeah, Michelle can give it to her.
I'm happy to email it to whoever needs it.
You, you have an email already Jude?
Whatever Michelle sent out, there were a number of drawings and sketches and photographs.
Yeah, I think they were all in there.
Okay, great.
I did see, but I, I always like to see things on paper too.
Okay.
Great, well, you have, we have plenty of hard copies for you.
Thank you.
So Jude, you'll, you'll get in touch to go take site visit or whatever?
Sure, or I can drive by.
Uh huh.
Right on the road.
Right, happy to coordinate a, a walkthrough together, that's helpful in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so are there any other questions from the board? Hi.
No, I'm going to just start this one, so she looks at this one because you can't really see it at all.
Right. It would even be less visible than that with plants on both sides of it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other, any other questions? No, you, you got your homework, we're good.
So Jude.
Okay, before you guys get up though.
Is that extra, is that too much?
If you want, you can call me about it.
Okay.
I'm going to be talking to Butch and.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like something that might be clarified for future proposals.
Okay, before you leave, wait, 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 don't get up, I actually need your name and where, because I never heard, I don't know who you are, I'm sorry.
Me?
But I need it for the record.
Jean, Jean Mark Flack, F L A C K, and my landscape design firm is Fortulus and I'm based in Catskill.
Yeah, because nowhere, is, is that someplace in the application?
It's on the.
It's on the documents.
It's on the front page of the, of the documents you have, but I, I can.
Okay, cool, thank you, just for the record, and then I'll read the contiguous neighbors for both cases. So for twenty three oh seven, Richard and Susan Mellert, Peter Jones, sorry, P O Box four oh three Woodstock, Peter Jones, two eleven South Sparta Street in Ruston, Los Angeles, Gene Fish, twelve forty three East Thirty First Street in Brooklyn, Sterling Proffer, four sixteen Ocean Avenue, apartment seventeen, Brooklyn, New York, John and Patricia Mellert, six ninety three Xena Road, Woodstock, and Jeffrey Milstein, twenty six hundred Route two twelve, Woodstock, New York. I believe in one of those cases, there was a letter from Ms. Mellert, Gordon, or no?
Yeah.
It's not, then I just spoke to her on the phone then, she just wanted to know more information about the project.
Mellert, Mellert, Mellert Road.
Okay.
And the contiguous neighbors for twenty three oh eight, again, John and Patricia Mellert, six ninety three Xena Road, Woodstock, Arlene West, forty one East Sixty Eighth Street, apartment six A in New York, Fernback Productions Inc., P O Box fourteen eighty eight, Woodstock, New York, and Jeffrey Milstein, twenty six hundred Route two twelve, Woodstock, New York.
Okay, Jude?
Well, we always read the contiguous neighbors, but if there's anybody else in the public who has anything to say, because it seems like there might be some people.
I think this person here is with these, I believe. And there's Ken Panza and he's never been bashful, so I think he would have spoken up by now. At least to my knowledge, unless he can't find his unmute button. So give me Ken, three, two, one. All right, so with that, I would, I'd like to re, close the public hearing, grab a second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I'd like to recess cases twenty three oh seven and twenty three oh eight. A second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Have a good night.
Okay. All right, so since Jude's here, maybe we can read this decision? Good?
Okay.
Case, this decision, but that's just, oh, here we go. I'm making a mess of all your papers here, I'm like changing all the papers in and out. I'm smiling.
And I tried to make it so organized.
Oh, she's frozen, no, she, there she is.
I tried to make it so organized for you too.
I know, you do, you do a great job, but if it's not my organization, I don't recognize. Okay. I would like to open up Z B A case number twenty three oh four, do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any discussion of the case before I put the resolution forward? No, okay. We have a resolution, based upon the standards for consideration of variable variances and conditional upon compliance of stated representations, variable variances. On the sound of Woodstock Article four, Marion Wolf Regulations, Section two sixty dash sixteen, attachment two, it's modified by Section two sixty dash twenty six A for a forty foot infringement to a minimum required seventy five foot front yard setback in order to construct an enclosed porch sunroom and Section two sixty dash sixteen attachment two, as modified by Section two sixty dash twenty six A for a thirty foot infringement into a minimum required seventy five foot front yard setback. In order to relocate and assist six shed is hereby granted, subject to all requirements of the zoning law of town of Woodstock and New York State Civil Property Law and all other applicable laws, codes and regulations. Vote is as follows. Gordon Webb, aye, Michael Stiglio?
Yes.
Jude Salado?
Aye.
Joseph Bellacat, March is willing.
Yes.
Martin Mills absent, the vote carries. For yes, one absent and no abstaining. I guess, Marsh, can I have your pen and my sign?
We lost, we lost Michelle.
Huh?
We lost Michelle.
Oh, yeah, she's gone.
She had internet issues probably.
I'll tell you that a bit. Yeah. All right, so I guess that's it, we have new cases coming too. Do I need to assign any of them?
What will we do when we're here?
When we're here?
Yeah.
Yeah, good enough. And we don't have, yeah, because you go look at something and haven't really heard what's going on, doesn't really know. All right, sounds good to me. So with that, without further ado, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting. All favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks Jude.
Night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.